Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to the May 30th, 2018 zoning board of adjustment meeting for the town of Merrimack. The next meeting will be June 27th, 2018. If you could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, just as far from.
Thank you. Rich, if you could read in the preamble, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the community development office. Petitioners should proceed with this formant to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones or pagers if you happen to have them.
Thank you. If anybody plans on speaking tonight, testifying for or against a petition, speaking about a petition, if you could please stand and raise your right hand. If you plan on doing any speaking tonight, I need to swear again, so please stand, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth so help you God. Thank you very much. Some housekeeping items, when you come up, make sure that the light on the microphone is bright green. I know it's green, but make sure it's bright green. That means it's lit up. And also, please make sure that you sign in as well. Before speaking, make sure, at least before speaking the first time, please state your name for the record.
We don't have Zina, so please speak clearly and get into the mic.
Yes. Our recorder is not out, is out this evening, so please make sure you speak clearly into the microphone so everything is recorded. We're gonna have tonight Kathleen Rod will be sitting in for Fran and Tony. Lenny, you're gonna be sitting in for Lynn. For the, yeah, we're good. All right. So, first agenda item, winning swimming LLC petitioner, feel free to come on down, and Carolyn and Michael Karen owners, variance under section 2.02.1A, 2. D of the zoning ordinance to permit a home occupation that occupies greater than 25% of the inhabitable floor area of the dwelling. The parcel is located at 12 Collins Avenue in the R1 Residential and Aquifer Conservation District's Tax Map 6D Lot 564, case number 2018-10. Hi.
Hi.
How are you? Will you state your name for the record, please?
Carolyn Karen.
Oh, make sure your microphone's on, please. Bright green, push the button.
There we go.
All right.
Carolyn Karen.
Okay. Carolyn, tell us a little bit about why we're here. If you can give me kind of a 50,000-foot view, what are we looking at here?
I have a home-based business and it came to my attention that the business was more than 25% of the inhabitable space of the house, which I wasn't aware was a restriction. And so, I'm here to seek variance.
Okay. And there is five criteria that you have written out. If you could read in each criteria to the record and stop after each one in case there's any questions, greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The footprint of the house used for business purposes was calculated at 30% per the April 11th, 2018 memorandum by Robert Price, planning and zoning administrator. The business uses an indoor pool in a finished area of the house, which used to be a garage. The pool only has one swimmer at a time and noises contained since it is indoors. We will also, excuse me, we have also provided off-street parking in the old driveway that, and have reminded patrons to watch their speed and be respectful of neighbors.
Any questions from people on the board? Number two, please.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because we have installed the smallest indoor pool available to satisfy the needs of both our athletes and our learn-to-swim students. We have also provided access to the nearest bathroom with an available shower. All business is enclosed and the remainder of the house is not accessible during business hours. I am no different than a hairdresser, other than my tools, meaning my pool is much larger than a chair would be.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Number three, please.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because I am a single-employee business who is providing a substantial community service in the most efficient and cost-effective way possible. Keeping the pool at my house keeps my costs down and lets me stay competitively priced with other swim schools. Since most of my clients have families of their own, they understand and respect being able to swim in a residential neighborhood.
Questions from the board? Number four, please.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The business exists within the original footprint of the house. We recently added a detached garage with a shop and a bonus room upstairs, but the new building will not have anything to do with the business, and we would have built it anyway even if we didn't have the business. The second-floor bonus room will have livable space, which would bring the business percentage down to 21% of the livable space. This business has existed for six years and has not affected any property values in the area.
Number five.
Unnecessary hardship. Owning to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because we installed this pool because my daughter and I were training for triathlons and we wanted a pool to train in. This room was large enough to hold the pool, bike trainers, and the treadmill. Once I received my coaching certifications, I started helping others in my pool for convenience. More requests for help started the business. There is no other room to put the pool in the house, and moving it to a commercial area would be costly and not feasible for my business model of one client at a time.
Number two.
And number two, the proposal use, excuse me, the proposed use is a reasonable one because many residential houses have pools, either indoor or outdoor. I just happen to teach in mine. I also generate no more traffic than any other single appointment home business.
Any questions, or everybody feel that that was satisfied?
I have a question, but I just kinda wanted to go backwards here to number four. You mentioned a detached garage with a second-floor bonus room. Is that something that's completed?
It has had its electrical inspections, but we have not gotten a CO yet.
Ah, okay. So, once that's done, then you'd be within compliance of the ordinance at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
Assuming that the board counts a detached livable space as part of the calculation.
Understood, thank you. So, to that note, Kelly, does community development consider the detached garage part of livable work, livable space?
I'd have to check on that with Robert. That's his determination to make.
Okay.
He did not count it, just to let you know.
So, even with the detached, with the detached garage, I mean, it's the 25%, it kinda sounds like you're almost just over that, like that 25%.
Without the livable space on the second floor, we're at about 30%.
Mm-hmm.
And with counting the livable space, once it's completed, we would be at 21%.
Any other questions from anybody else on the board? I'm gonna open this up to the public. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, I do have a letter that I need to read into record. This is, dear zoning, this is regarding this petition. Dear zoning board, we own 11 Collins Ave, the residential property across the street from 12 Collins Ave property, that is seeking a zoning variance to permit a home occupation business that is greater than 25% of the inhabitable floor area of the dwelling. We feel that the town zoning should be adhered to and is meant to protect all property owners, and to grant this variance would set a precedent for any other home occupation business in town to request the same. We are not in favor of you granting this request for variance for the reason and for the increased parking and traffic that may result, and that it could reduce the quality and affect the value of the residential neighborhood. It is not a commercial business district. Please take this in concern and consideration at the hearing tonight. Thank you very much. Signed, Antonio and Joan S. Cardillo, A&amp;J Cardillo 2011 Trust. So, that being said, you'd mentioned that you have, and I went by the place, so the pool's enclosed.
Yes, it is.
Right. Is it behind the house? I mean, I was trying to look for it without getting out of my truck.
If you're looking at the house, it's on the building, in the building on the right that's attached to the house.
Oh, okay.
It used to be a garage.
So, kinda where I figured it was.
Yes.
Okay. So, then, as far as, how many people do you generally have there at one, at any given time?
At once, there's one person in the pool at a time.
Okay.
I do have families that come, but then they're there for, I have a family of three who's there for an hour and a half because I have one person at a time, excuse me, for a half hour at each time.
How many cars a day generally do, or how many customers do you have during a day, clients do you have during the day?
On my busiest days, seven to eight over eight-to-ten-hour period.
Okay. Seven days a week, or?
No, four days a week.
Four days a week?
Yes.
Okay. Weekends, or?
I only do one Saturday a month, and that's only January through April.
Were there questions on the board? Any other questions regarding that? So, obviously, there's, you're against that. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor or against petition? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing unless there's any other comments from the board? Okay. Discussion items? Discussion, motions?
I'll make a motion to grant winning swimming LLC petitioner in Carolyn and Michael Karen owners, variance under section 2.02.1A, 2. D, 2. D, however that goes, of the zoning ordinance to permit a home occupation that occupies greater than 25% of the inhabitable floor area of the dwelling. The parcel's located at 12 Collins Avenue in the R1 Residential and Aquifer Conservation District's Tax Map 6D Lot 564, case number 2018-10.
Seconded by Kathleen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is 5-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you. All right. Lenny? Lynn's here, so you're off the hook. I don't think you heard me. All right. Actually, no, I'm afraid, are you recusing yourself for the next one?
Yes.
Okay. So, Lenny, you're.
You're not off the hook.
You're not off the hook. You're not sitting in for Rich because he's recusing himself from the next item. All right. So, next agenda item, FMR NH Realty and F/ FMR Merrimack Realty petitioner's owner, special exception under section 2.02.4E of the zoning ordinance to permit an automotive service and repair use within the I-2 industrial district. The parcel is, the parcels are located at 1 Spartan Way and 2 Contra Way in the I-2 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map 3C Lot 191, Spartan 1 Spartan, and map 2C Lot 113 to Contra, case number 2018-14. Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just state your name.
For the record, my name's John Sokel. I'm an attorney at Hinkley Allen in Manchester, and with me tonight is Robin Gottschall from Fidelity Investments.
Excellent. You, can you want to give us kind of a 50,000-foot view of what we're looking at here?
Sure. This is on the Fidelity campus, and what they propose to do as part of an employee amenity is to bring on six to eight times a month a customized automobile service trailer called Zipity Cars. It's gonna be located in an existing parking area. It's done exclusively for Fidelity employees, and, you know, Fidelity's trying to stay in line with ongoing trends for employee traction and retention. Zipity Cars are in use at Dartmouth Hitchcock Medical Center in Lebanon as well as Dartmouth College, and so, trying to stay competitive and in the forefront of the employee world. But that's, that's the proposal in a nutshell.
Working in employment, I can fully understand that. I really can.
And the trailer itself is wholly self-contained, so cars go up inside it and it's self-contained, so there's, there's nothing outside of the trailer.
What are the services that would be, from an automotive perspective?
Primarily oil changes, detailing.
Oil changes, detailing, okay.
So, it's not a full-on service station.
Okay.
It's very discreet services that employees can have done while they work.
Okay, excellent. If, so, in your packet you received, you have the special exception, you have question one, and it has four parts to it. If you could just read question 1A and BC, go through those and just stop after each one unless, in case there's some questions.
Sure. Question 1A, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use of uses in terms of overall community development because the trailer's gonna be located in one of two locations that we're gonna discuss with the planning board next week, but it's, either location is on an existing Fidelity parking lot, paved parking lot. It's gonna exclusively service Fidelity employees. These are entirely self-contained, customized, fully enclosed trailers. They're EPA-approved, and we believe it will be good in terms of overall community development because it's a benefit for Fidelity employees. Will assist Fidelity, again, with employee retention and attraction, and Fidelity's one of the largest employers in the town as well as in the state, so that's why we feel we satisfy question 1A.
Any questions on question 1A? All right, B?
B, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood and shall produce no diminution of real estate values in the neighborhood area because it's, it's a fully mobile trailer. It's just brought onto the site occasionally. It will not be visible or heard off-site. No one will know it's there. It's entirely for the exclusive use of Fidelity employees, not the general public, and they use low-decibel equipment, battery-powered tools, and frankly, if it was gonna be a nuisance or noisy, Fidelity wouldn't let it on their property in the first place.
Okay. Questions regarding B?
C? There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians because it, once it's parked on the site, it doesn't move. It sits there for the day when it's there. Cars are rolled in, rolled out when they're done, right there in a paved parking lot. People are gonna know it's there. It's a well-signed vehicle, and there'll be no disruption of pedestrian vehicular movement while it's, while it's there in service on the site.
Questions? And D?
That an adequate parking area is provided for motor vehicles on the premises because, again, I mean, this is a mobile customized trailer. It's gonna be located in an existing parking lot. It takes up about three or four parking spaces as it sits. There's ample parking on the Fidelity campus. It's one small area of a fairly remote parking lot, and it's not gonna, not gonna bother anybody, but there's more than adequate and ample parking for it.
Okay. Any questions regarding this petition? Lenny? All right, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak for this petition? Is there anybody that would like to speak against this petition? Okay, are there any final questions on the board? Comments? All right, I'm gonna, anything else you wanted to add before I close the public hearing?
I think that's it. Happy to answer questions.
All right. I know there's a lot of parking over there, so you shouldn't have too much of a problem, I guess, getting a trailer in there. All right. That being said, I'll close the public hearing. Comments from the board? Recommendations? Motion?
I make a motion to grant FMR NH Realty, FMR Merrimack Realty petitioner's owners, special exception under section 2.02.4E of the zoning ordinance to permit an automotive service and repair use within a 1 to 2 industrial, I'm sorry, an I-2 industrial district. Parcel is located at 1 Spartan Way and 2 Contra Way in the I-2 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map 3C Lot 191, 1 Spartan, map 2C Lot 113 to Contra, case number 2018-14.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Lynn. There is a special exception by staff. Applicant shall obtain site plan approval from planning board for the proposed automated automotive service and repair use. Excellent. Seconded by Lynn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Where Rich is? Someone wanna go out in the hall and grab Rich, or?
There he is.
There he is. All right. Next petition, Steve Grenier, petition owner, variance under section 2.02.1 of the zoning ordinance to permit an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, with 1,131 square feet, whereas a maximum of 1,000 square feet is permitted. The parcel is located at 75 Babusick Lake Road in the R4 Residential and Aquifer Conservation District, tax map 5C Lot 472-01, case number 2018-12. Did you sign in?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, I will, for the record, note that.
Lynn wants off the hook.
Lenny is officially off the hook, and Rich is back in for this petition.
All right, we're good to go.
All right. You just state your name for the record?
I am Stephen Grenier.
Stephen, it's nice, it's nice of you to join us. Why don't you give us kind of an overview of what we're looking at here?
Please note, I'm sitting in the lucky chair, this left side, so.
Yes.
I think two for two, let's go for the hat-trick.
Yep.
I purchased the property at 75 Babusick Lake Road back in 96. There is an existing ADU on the second floor for which there was a building permit issued back in, 96, I'm sorry, I bought it in 2006. At this point, I came to the town because I just wanted to have everything effectively in compliance on the table. I just recently listed the home for sale yesterday, and it's just, just too big for us now. And with, without an approval, there would almost be an undertone that there's something improper going on or that type of thing, so we just want the property recognized for what it is, if that is in your decision, you know, ultimately.
So, the ADU was there when you moved in?
Correct.
Well, there was no, there's nothing, Kelly, there's nothing on file?
So, the ADU existed prior to him purchasing the home. We have an old service request on file for the property, however, and that request flagged the ADU as not having obtained the proper approvals. However, it's not clear in our records if the previous owner was ever notified to correct the issue before selling the property to the current owner.
When was that service request?
2006.
2006. So, why don't we do this? Why don't you have five points of law to go through?
Okay. And it's not a complex issue, so I will apologize for the redundancy in conflict with the preamble about restating things, but it kinda comes up over and over again. Item one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Since this request for the variance does not involve any change to the existing structure, public interest would not be impacted in any way. The use of the dwelling remains exactly the same.
Any questions? Number two.
Thank you. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the ADU was constructed in 1996, 97. The prior owner applied to the town and was issued a building permit. I believe that he acted in good faith at that time in getting the town's approval for the ADU addition. As the current owner, I too am acting in good faith and trust by initiating this action to be in compliance with the town's guidelines.
Any questions on number two? Number three?
Okay, number three. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because granting this variance would simply bring full property disclosure to all of the various municipal departments involved in community oversight and development. The property is assessed and taxed based on the addition of the ADU.
Questions? Okay.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. There are no physical changes to the property, and therefore, the approval would have no adverse impact to any surrounding properties.
Questions on number four?
Nope.
Okay, number five?
Okay, unnecessary hardship. Owning to special condition of the property that distinguish it from the properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because, since the property will physically remain unchanged, there would be no impact by way of advantage or hardship to other properties in the area. The use of the property will continue as a residential dwelling, and any decision by the board will likely go unnoticed by the general public.
And number five?
Okay, item two, I should say, here?
Well, which one you just did, unnecessary hardship?
Yes, we're doing 5A, and I also had made a note in 5A1, so we need 5A2, looks like?
Yep.
Okay. The proposed use is a reasonable one because, in 96, the town's governing representatives at the building department thought that the addition of the ADU was reasonable with the permit issuance. I am asking the current board membership to recognize that that prior decision, approval, and intent.
So, how do you, so, the, the ADU is, I got this floor plan here. Is that what the upstairs looks like, just like the downstairs?
That is the actual dimensions, because I just wanted to confirm what the actual square footage was.
Okay.
So, I actually took an afternoon and, yeah, made a scale drawing for you guys.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, the, how do you access the ADU, it's asked through the house, right?
Okay. There is a rear entrance with a deck, okay, with a six-foot slider, so they, there is a separate access from the backyard. The only other access is through the primary dwelling unit, where you go through the living room, as you can see the stairwell. At the bottom of that stairwell, it takes a turn into the living room downstairs. There is no direct second entrance or exit for the ADU, so.
So, it can't, I guess what I'm getting at is that it can't be an apartment.
Right.
You have to enter the house to get into the, to the upstairs. There's no direct access to the upstairs.
No, you've got access to the back.
Right. But you don't have a second means of egress and even of fire or whatever, I'm assuming.
There's no access to the main house.
Okay.
It's only through the back.
Correct. Right.
Okay.
I suppose no difference, and if somebody had a home built on a hill with an ADU in a basement, they could access it from the.
That's right.
From a walk-in entrance from the backyard or something of that nature. Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking, you know, to make and be in compliance for legal two-family, you know, with making structural changes, a separate front entrance would be required, closing it off the primary dwelling unit, that type of thing. We just wanna recognize what's there.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, what I'm trying to understand is, could this, could somebody buy this with the intention of having two apartments? And that's what I was trying to understand.
Not without, and I discuss that with the office. There would be two additional variances that would be required in order to be in compliance with a legal two-family.
Right.
One would be the structural change, adding a direct entrance in the front of the building, okay, and then there would be some setback requirements and the size of the lot.
This is strictly ADU.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Just to summarize, the only portion that's out of compliance currently is the fact that it's over 1,000 square feet.
Ah, I see.
Right. What you, I can't take a wall out.
No, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying.
Right, right.
Any, are there any questions on the board? Comments?
It was a ranch, because I know when this happened.
Right.
It was a ranch, and they added a second floor. It was a ranch, and they added a second floor, and what they did was just made it an additional floor in the building, so that instead of a, a ranch, you've got a two-story colonial.
Right.
Which, if you look at it from the outside, is no different, and actually, I think, would improve the values, because now you've got a colonial instead of a ranch.
Okay, all right. Dan Belanger, who was a firefighter here in town, grew up in a house, as I understand it, he purchased the home from his parents, put the addition on upstairs, he and his wife lived on the second floor while both of their respective mothers resided on the first floor.
Correct.
He has since retired, sold the property, moved to Virginia, so... We bought it because we just simply had six kids, and two washer dryer hookups was a wonderful thing with eight people in the house.
I get it, I get it, all right. Unless there's none other questions, I'm going to open this up. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? All right, any other comments on the board?
Just a general question. What would happen if we denied it? I mean, what, what harm, is it, is it just something on paper for the sale?
I, I think that's a big part of it. I tend to be a little bit particular in, in trying to be upfront with everything and everybody, so if we have somebody that was interested in the property, I mean, when I bought it, I looked at it, clearly, it's an in-law apartment. I never saw a listing, I drove by it one day and said, "It looks like it's big enough to house our six kids," and we closed on it within a week, never even, never even saw a listing on how they were describing it. Currently, it, you know, having it up for sale, as I mentioned, there would otherwise be an undertone suggesting if, if, if a buyer's agent or, or what have you representative came to the town and said, "Is this approved?" And the town says no, then I think it just lends itself to some negativity, maybe cost of sale, I don't know. I just, I just want to recognize, I came to the town because I did not want to advertise the home for something that it wasn't.
Okay.
And that's what started this.
I'm just curious if, if this could potentially go on forever unnoticed, if a question wasn't brought up by a buyer?
Nope.
No, and, and the irony is, all of the abutters were there when the addition was put on, as I learned in talking with them all. They've been long-term neighbors, so they didn't have an issue with it back in 96, 97, so certainly, they don't have an issue here.
Also, now that staff is aware that this is not technically in compliance, we would have to either pursue, or if the property sells, then the future owner will need to come before the board and ask for a variance.
There would be an issue if somebody's buying it, because that would come out and it could conceivably kill the sale or just make it problematic, so there is an issue there.
But, I'm not against this, I was just curious.
No, no, no.
How far along could it go without being a problem?
If he's got it on the market, it's right now.
All right.
He bought it unknowingly.
My question is, is the reason that this is a variance after already having been approved
at the time because the law changed hands and each owner needs to have a separate variance? Is that how this works?
No.
No, the issue is, we don't have a record saying that a variance was ever actually granted. We don't have a record stating that there was a variance granted for the ADU.
So, how was a building permit issued?
They weren't aware that there was excess eight, um, square footage, so they issued it, not realizing that there was more square footi, minor increase in square footage, and so they issued it. And it's come out to light now that there's a little bit more square footage there than what's technically allowed.
Understood. I'm going to close the public hearing. Any further discussion or motions?
My turn? All right, I'll make a motion that we grant the variance under section 2.02.1 of the zoning ordinance to permit an accessory dwelling unit with 1,131 square feet, whereas a maximum of 1,000 square feet is permitted. The parcel is located at 75 Babusick Lake Road in the R4 Residential in Aquifer Conservation District, tax map 5C, lot 472-1, case 2018-12.
Seconded. Seconded, Rod Peacher. So, motion by Lynn, seconded by Rod. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Five, zero, zero. You're all set, sir.
Thank you very much. The lucky chair.
Lucky chair.
Have a good evening.
I'm going to see who's, who's going to sit in the next time.
All right, next petition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah and Steve Peroni, petitioner owner, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of an in-ground pool three feet from the rear property line, whereas 12 feet is required. The parcel is located at 29 Level Street in the R4, R4 Residential District, tax map 7D, lot 012-25, case number 2018-11. Hi.
Hi.
How you doing? How are you?
Yes, good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
If you guys want to just state your name and then kind of give us a quick overview of what we're looking at here, and we'll get into the five points.
Sure, I'm Sarah Peroni, and we're here to ask for an exception to a setback requirement against our association land, which we didn't realize, I don't know, this obviously doesn't matter, I don't think, but we didn't realize when we purchased the house that, that land wasn't ours, that it wasn't in fact the association's.
Okay.
So, it came to light when we were pulling permits to start building the pool, so we tried to, so we shifted the pool so it would at least be on our property.
Mm-hmm.
And, but we're, we're still asking for an exception for the variance of...
Step back.
Step back, yes.
Have you, what's, have you approached the assoc, I take you approached the association, was there comments?
I'm Stephen Peroni, by the way, and yes, we have, and there haven't been any objections.
Okay. All right, there's five points of law. If you could read those into the record, we may have questions after each one, and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The installation of an in-ground pool on our property would not be contrary to the public interest for reasons outlined below. The pool would not alter the essential character of the locality. Our property line abuts ground owned by the association. This association-owned land is not used by any of the residents in our association and is largely enclosed by a row of trees to the left, wetland to the right, and woods owned by the town along the back. The pool would not threaten public health, safety, or welfare, because our pool would adhere to all safety standards, including but not limited to a gate no less than four feet tall that would go around the perimeter of the pool.
Questions? Number two, please.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the pool would be located in an area of our property that has ample distance between the structure and our neighbors, so will not result in overcrowding. The land our property abuts is owned by the association and therefore unable to be purchased and built upon in the future, ultimately limiting the chance of overcrowding in the future.
Number three?
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the section our property we would, the section of our property we would like to place our pool on is currently used by our family, including two young girls, to enjoy recreational activities. The installation of a pool would therefore be consistent with the area's present use of recreational enjoyment. The absence of a pool in our yard does not result in a gain to the general public, as the area in which we are proposing to place our pool is not encroaching on any of our neighbors' land. The loss to our family with not being able to install a pool in that location is not outweighed by a gain to the general public, and therefore granting the variance would do substantial justice.
Questions? Uh, number four?
For the following reasons, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The proposed structure is unobtrusive. The pool have a privacy fence and/or shrubbery blocking the end of our driveway where the pool would begin. The proposed location is ample distance away from any of our neighbors' property lines.
Questions? Number five?
Unnecessary hardship, okay. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision, provision, and the specific application of that provision to the property because, one, the proposed location of the pool borders land owned by the association, which is not designed to be used by others within the association due to there being no direct access to the land from the street. Therefore, the existing of, the existence of a pool in that location of our property would not result in overcrowding, a decrease in property value, or a decrease in the public safety or general welfare. The proposed use is a reasonable one because, one, it would not interfere with the value or have a negative impact on neighboring properties, two, it would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and three, it would be placed in a discreet location with appropriate private, privacy measures implemented.
Any questions? The only thing that I see in regards to unnecessary hardship is that it seems like the only unnecessary hardship is if this isn't approved, you can't put the pool in. Right, okay.
It's basically...
And that's okay, that's, I mean, you can, you can say, say that.
So, we'll just be really hot outside in summer.
I get, okay, I, I understand, I understand. Any questions from the board? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? I'm sure if you speak against it, you will not be invited to the pool. Any other questions from the board? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion items, motions?
We accept the variance under section... Grant, grant the variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of an in-ground pool three feet from the rear property line, whereas 12 feet is required. The parcel is located at 29 Level Street in the R4 Residential District, tax map 7D, lot 012-25, case number 2018-11.
All right, motion made by Rod, seconded by Kathleen. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Five, zero, zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Only thing to keep in mind is, if you do your construction, yeah, there always is, right, there's always catch. If you, if you ever, if you have 30 days, that somebody can come back and appeal this, so if you start construction before the 30 days, it is at your own risk. After that, congratulations and have a great summer.
Thank you, guys, so much, thank you.
Yes.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Next up, APMK Ventures LLC, petitioner, yes, sir?
For safety sake, I'm going to leave the room.
Okay. Um, APMK Ventures LLC, petitioner owner, special exception under section 2.02.3C1 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a single-family residence in the general commercial district. The parcel is located at 702 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 general commercial, tax map 7E, lot 023-01, case number 2018-13. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Long time no see.
Yep.
So, what are we looking at?
My name's Peter McClintock, I'm the manager of APMK Ventures. What we're looking to do is build a single-family home within the C2 zone, which is allowed by special exception. The lot complies to all residential zoning, it, you know, there's no variances needed for frontage, setbacks, lot size, that's what I'm looking to do.
Okay, if you want to just go through the points, and we may have questions after each one.
Sure. The specific site is an appropriate location for such use, uses in terms of overall community development, because it would be in character for the immediate area. There are two single-family homes abutting the site and one other just a lot away. They are also in a C2 zone. I attached a map, just kind of with some highlights there.
Any questions? B.
The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, because there are other single-family homes in the area, and minimal site work would be needed to develop the site. The topography of the lot should not substantially change. The home would be connected to town water and sewer.
Questions? C.
There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, because the proposed use will add minimal traffic to the road, to the area on the road. The occupant of the proposed use would probably have two or three vehicles, and the extra two to three cars coming and going should have little impact.
A and D.
Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed uses or use, because it will be serviced by town water and sewer and have on-site parking.
Okay, any questions? So, it's a single family, single-family build?
That's what I'm proposing, yes.
Okay.
Question. Pete, where do you anticipate the house going in?
It would probably go back in the back.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the other lot, that's kind of all back there.
That's okay.
All right. Um, any, I guess, any questions from the board? Concerns, comments? Seems like it's pretty straightforward. Is there, I'm going to open this up to the public, is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay.
Pretty boring night.
Pretty, pretty, pretty good.
It's a chair.
Pretty non, non...
You have a letter.
You're right, there is, and I am going to put that in to petition. Thank you very much for reminding me, Kelly. Um, there is a letter, so I will read this in. The letter is response to the notice received by my mother, June Church, of 704A Daniel Webster Highway, Merrimack, New Hampshire. There is no opposition to the building of a private residence on the property. The timing of the proposed construction is the main concern. The property was owned by my parents, Fred and June Church, and abuts and shares a boundary with the family home. After my dad's passing in 2016, my mother was forced to sell the property because of back taxes, and she could not take the stress of letters for payments or the property would be taken by the town. During the negotiations for the sale, it was stated to both she and my sister Jane that there would be no activity taking place in the near future. Unfortunately, this is, was not put in writing, but rather a gentleman's agreement. Sale was finalized in the fall of 2017, a short few months ago. My mother was hospitalized April 1st and was released from rehab May 10th. I am here from Maine to oversee her care. My concern is that any disturbance to the property may have adverse effects on her health, both emotionally and physically. My parents have lived at 704A Daniel Webster Highway for 58 years, and have had the 702 property since the 60s, always thinking it was a sanctuary for birds and other wildlife. Mom will be beginning her 95th year in a few days, and her enjoyment to this point is derived from watching the numerous birds and, and other creatures that visit the feeders. I am concerned that any changes to this point would be detrimental to her health as well as her right to, to enjoyment of life. As stated, there's no opposition to the, to what the owner intends, but the timing of the beginning of the construction is of great concern. I'm not certain that I will be able to attend the hearing due to personal injury, but certainly I will if I can. Thank you for your consideration of this letter, and I anticipate hearing from you. Sincerely, Nancy Church Venier. My understanding is, some of this was addressed by planning, or, or you have addressed this, Peter?
Have I?
I don't know.
Nope, that was for...
Something else, sorry. I've got a second. Um, when do you plan on...
I'm not sure.
Not sure on the construction? Have you spoken with the churches?
Oh, I've talked to them, not recently.
Okay.
Actually, there was a tree that she was concerned about during one of the storms, and I went and talked to her, but there wasn't any issue.
All right. Um, have, have they expressed any of the concerns that I just brought up?
No, I haven't heard from them.
Okay, all right. All right, I mean, they're not in opposition, I mean, it is your, it is your land, and, you know, I, I understand the concerns where they're coming from, but this is obviously something that has to be put into the, to the record.
I understand.
Any comments or further questions?
One comment I have about that letter was, there was no indication of when would be the good time to start building. You know, now would not be a good time, and I don't know who she spoke to when that property was sold, but I think she should have stated 2020, 2019, or at some point, it's, it's tough for anybody purchasing the property to not know when they can build at a convenient time for that seller. Thank you.
Unfortunately, it is a, it is a rather subjective item, so, yeah. And you were the one that, obviously you purchased it from them, so, and they, you'd asked, they'd asked you if you were doing anything, and you said not at the mo, at the time.
Right, I said I didn't know what my plans were, nothing in the immediate future. I mean, I don't remember my exact words, but, you know, we've done other projects since
I mean, I don't remember my exact words, but, you know, we've done other projects since then, so, I mean, I didn't really know.
Okay.
And I don't know even now, so...
Okay. Well, I'm gonna close the public hearing unless there's anything else to ask. And any further discussion from the board or motions?
My turn? My turn. I move that we grant the special exception under section 2.02.3C1. Am I on the right one? Yes. Of the zoning ordinance to permit construction of single-family residence in the general commercial district. The parcel is located at 702 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 general commercial, tax map 7E, lot 023-01, case number 2018-13.
Do I have a second? Second. All right. Sorry, Rod, you beat me again. Motion by Lynn, seconded by Rod. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Um, last petition of the evening. Uh, College Bound Movers, petitioner, and 14 Continental SPE LLC owner, variance under section 17103B of the zoning ordinance to permit a sign with a setback of twelve feet from the right-of-way whereas twenty feet is required. The parcel is located at 14 Continental Boulevard in the I-1 Industrial and Aqua for Conservation Districts and tax districts and wellhead protection area, tax map 3C, lot 089, case number 2018-15. If, uh, there's a portable mic over there if you'd be sending. If you could just sign in and state your name, that'd be great. Uh, before you start, were you here when we started it? Because I don't think you got sworn in.
Uh, no, I wasn't.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Sorry, I tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Sorry.
Sure. Uh, Nathan Chamberlain, professional engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. We're here tonight for College Bound Movers to discuss a variance to section 17103B, which is a sign setback. So, College Bound Movers, he bought the building and rehabbed it and put this addition on in 2016, and he's just wrapping that up and he had a sign put in. Typically, what happens is we do the site plan and then he'll hire a sign contractor and they go and get all the necessary permits to put the sign in and to meet all the regulations. So that's what happened. The contractor put the sign in and when they did the, uh, did the final walkthrough, someone noticed that it was less than the required amount of twenty feet, which most towns has ten-foot setback. Here it's twenty. So, uh, instead of moving this beautiful sign, we decided to go the route of getting, asking for a variance. So the sign is right here. Apologize, I hung my pointer. And the edge of pavement is right along here and then there's about eight feet in between the edge of pavement and the right-of-way. And the contractor who put the sign in measured from the edge of pavement and not from, you know, he didn't know where the right-of-way was. Typically, you can tell by what telephone poles are, but whatever. And so that's where we stand. So we're here for a variance.
So the contractor put, measured from where?
The edge of pavement.
And should have measured from?
Well, the setback is from the right-of-way, the property line, the town right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
It's twenty-foot setback. So he measured from the edge of pavement and, won't be hold...
Common error.
Right.
They measure from the pavement instead of where the right-of-way is.
Everyone thinks the pavement is the right-of-way.
And it's not.
Okay.
So, here we are. Very nice sign. Uh, and if you look at it, I mean, it's a good bond of distance there. It's not blocking sight dents or anything. And so, but to make it legal, we're here to ask for variance. You know, we really don't want to have to relocate that sign. And if you look at the, if you push this back eight feet, it's gonna be right up against the building. It's gonna look kind of silly, so...
Right, I'm just surprised that a sign contractor, I mean, I would, I'm surprised they make that mistake, you know?
I'm not surprised at all.
If they put those signs up, so... All right, if you could read the five points, that would be great.
Apologize, this is, uh, gets a little wordy. It's, I'm sure it used to. Gets a little repetitive. All right. Point number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because granting this variance would allow the existing sign to remain in its current location. Upon reviewing the location of the sign along this stretch of Continental Boulevard, we found that the subject's sign is very consistent with what currently exists on the neighboring properties. So we did a little survey of what's out there and this is what we came up with. So number eight, Continental Boulevard, the sign is approximately twelve feet from the edge of road. Keep in mind, we're twenty feet from the edge of road, twelve feet from the property line, so these are all from the edge of road. Uh, number eight's twelve feet, number ten is twenty-five, number twelve is sixteen feet, number fifteen is eighteen feet, and number nineteen is sixteen feet. Uh, this, the sign for this property currently sits twenty feet from the edge of the road and does not present a safety hazard, which is obviously, which is consistent with the surrounding properties. Zoning ordinance are generally written to manage the development of towns and allow for responsible and reasonable development and expansion. Considering that this sign is consistent with the surroundings and will not create any issues for the general public, we believe that this proposal is reasonable. For these reasons and the fact that this proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, we believe that this proposal would not be contrary to the public interest.
Questions? All right, number two?
Number two, granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance because the location of the existing sign is consistent with other signs on Continental Boulevard. We believe that the intent of this ordinance is to provide adequate separation from the sign to the adjacent streets and to provide a nice visual appearance. The photos attached to this application show that the sign is balanced well within the landscaped area in front of the building. Also worth noting is that the Continental Boulevard has a larger right-of-way consisting of sixty feet rather than the normal fifty feet, which most, with most other roads. If Continental Boulevard had a fifty-foot right-of-way, the existing sign would be set back seventeen feet, which is why the sign, in our opinion, looks good in its current location. For these reasons and the fact that the proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, we believe that this proposal would observe the spirit of the ordinance.
Questions? Number three, please.
Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because granting this variance would allow the existing sign that the sign contractor installed to remain. The sign currently balanced nicely in the landscaped area between the building and Continental Boulevard. The sign in its current location will result in no negative impacts to the neighborhood and no safety hazards. Given this, it is our belief that this proposal will have no negative impacts to the general public. For this and all the reasons noted, we believe granting this variance would do substantial justice to the landowner. A denial of this variance would be an injustice to my client as there would be no apparent gain to the general public.
Number four?
Granting the variance would not diminish the values of the surrounding properties because the existing sign on the subject property has been located twenty feet from the edge of pavement rather than twenty feet from the right-of-way. The separation is very consistent with the neighborhood signage along Continental Boulevard. The sign on the subject property has been designed to complement the building and has been located with surrounding landscaping. There are no factors with this sign that would negatively impact the values of surrounding properties. It has also been our experience that new construction and development will oftentimes actually increase the value of surrounding properties. For all of these reasons, we would expect the project to have positive impacts on surrounding property values as it will rejuvenate the site and the surroundings.
Number five?
Number five, unnecessary hardship. It's broken down into a few different categories now. Five A, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the property, from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because section 17103B of the Merrimack zoning ordinance requires a twenty-foot setback from the right-of-way to the location of a sign. We believe that the intent of this ordinance is to provide adequate separation from roadways to enhance the visual appearance from the adjacent street. Since the right-of-way of Continental Boulevard is sixty feet wide, the existing location of the sign is close to where it would be located if the road with the standard right-of-way width of fifty feet. The location of the existing signage is also very consistent with the signage on neighboring properties and would, for the most part, and for the most part, is actually more conforming. Since the current sign location is balanced well with the landscaping area and the front of the site enhances the visual appearance from the street, we believe there should be some consideration given to the setback requirements. If the sign was located eight feet further into the site, we believe the visual appearance would be negatively impacted as the sign would be too close to the building. This may be very well, oh, this may very well be why the sign contractor positioned the sign in its current location. We do not believe that the existing sign will have a negative impact on the general public. Based on the above, we do not believe that a fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property.
And proposed use?
The proposed use is a reasonable one because, for the reasons previously stated, we believe the sign in its current location meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The sign in its current location will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Since the sign in its current location will be consistent with the neighborhood, we will enhance the property visually and will result in no negative impacts to the public. We believe that the proposed use is reasonable.
Any questions from the board? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Close the public hearing. Any questions, comments from the board, motions? Oh, turn on your mic and let's do it.
I make a motion that we grant College Bound Movers the petitioner and 14 Continental SPE LLC the owner, variance under section 17.10.3.3B of the zoning ordinance to permit a sign with a setback of twelve feet from the right-of-way whereas twenty feet is required. The parcel is located at 14 Continental Boulevard in the I-1 Industrial and Aqua for Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 3C, lot 089, case number 2018-15.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Rod, second. So, motion made by Kathleen, seconded by Rod. Any further discussion before we vote?
I wasn't even trying at that time. Just wasn't.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
All right, so...
Eight oh five?
For, uh, yeah, for eight, wow, eight variances. That's gotta be a record.
Yeah, really.
Going through eight in an hour. Not all, some special exceptions, okay. You're right.
Good boy, Kelly.
Thank you.
When we get to the items of discussion...
We're there.
Minutes.
Minutes.
Don't forget minutes after.
Minutes are after. Discussion before minutes.
Okay, it's discussion.
Okay. I noticed that we have a couple of members of Troop 15 in the audience. I was wondering if you guys wanted to come up and say something or say a few words. You don't have to, but you can.
Maybe if the adults with them want to come up and join and help explain their, uh...
No. No, the gentlemen can do it themselves.
Do you want me to swear you guys in as well?
No, they don't need to.
Okay, maybe you swear it in, all right. Have a seat.
Have a seat. Introduce yourselves, please.
Uh, my name is...
Make sure the mic's on.
It's a little button.
Is it bright green? All right, good.
They're good.
Uh, my name's Quincy Shoneman.
And my name is Derek Gribel.
All right.
And why are you here?
We're completing a requirement for our communications merit badge.
We had to come to a town meeting and jot down notes on different points of views from different people and then we had to put it into a format that we can present to our counselor.
All right. How'd we do? Did we do a good job? Oh, we appreciate you picking us. Because we know you had a lot of different public meetings you could've gone to. We appreciate you picking the ZPA.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I do have a question for you two, though. Did either one of you notice I'm wearing a New Hampshire Jamboree shirt?
Somebody noticed.
Usually I wear a collared shirt, but I figure if it's a scout shirt, it doesn't need to be collared. It's more important anyway. Um, so, just so you two know, I'm actually the committee chair for PAC 525. So make sure you guys go back and let CJ Bourne know that, uh, zoning board says hi.
Okay.
Oh, you guys are coming over to the crossover?
Yeah.
Excellent. So because you're appearing in a public community in front of a board, you now are legally obligated to be at that crossover.
Nice job, gentlemen. Very nice job.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. All right.
Sixty-odd years ago, we used to meet up here in this room. It didn't look like this then.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Approval of minutes, April 25th.
I move we approve them as printed.
Do I have a second? All right. Lynn, motions for approval, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I concur.
And approved by everybody.
No, nope, not approved by everybody.
Okay, approved, uh, five...
You can abstain.
So we have five, zero...